All right, we're ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners.
First, before we start, I want to congratulate Public Works on what they've been doing for eWaste. Commissioner O'Donnell and I went out there last week. I don't know if any of the Commissioners made it out there, but it was a steady stream of traffic coming through while we were there. And I think it's a great opportunity to keep advertising. We've got one more week of it this week coming up. Again, I want to congratulate Public Works and Susan and all of her staff.
They're doing a great job. The guys at the yard are doing a great job. We've got a little system figured out with the signs where everybody goes. It's being very well behaved, so it's looking out great.
Good. All right, Mr. Manager, what do we have today?
Commissioners, we have two topics we're going to talk about today. The first one will be with Chief Tagney, and we'll talk about volunteer fire department MOUs. And then we'll then have Lindsay talk about the Reagan bond proceeds. All right, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Larry Tagney, Deputy Chief, Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. I'm here this morning to talk about the differences between mutual aid agreements and auto aid agreements. We've had these in place for many, many years, and we're going to have some handouts here. We're going to distinctively talk about the seven volunteer departments that we currently have either a mutual aid or auto aid agreement with. As the handout states, you can see on there who has what type of aid and what we send and what kind of response and how this is defined every day for us. The auto aid agreements are defined as something that's when dispatch alarms us to go out to a call, the auto aid response is that it's an automatic dispatch. That means if resources are available for either us or the other party that we have an agreement with, we'll automatically respond if resources are available to respond. These resources for us with agreements coming in are an added support. It's not part of our effective response force. Sometimes you'll hear in the fire service, "ERF." It's E-R-F, and it's called for effective response force. All these aid agreements currently are just an added support to our current ERF at that point. The mutual aid agreement is where an organization needs to get on the radio or ask dispatch to ask the other organization or our organization if equipment is available and what type of equipment, how many people, personnel are needed to go on that call on a mutual aid agreement. So you can see in the seven reports here or the seven departments, we have two mutual aid departments and five auto aid agreements. You can see the response type, which is most of them are all defined as structure fires. And then the apparatus type is defined as usually a tender water source or an engine company to respond. With that, is there any questions on these definitions? Is there any further discussion on what the differences are or how we currently respond to these mutual or auto aid agreements?
What about the city of Wichita?
The city of Wichita and Derby and Andover are all enhanced auto aid agreements, and I wasn't prepared to talk about them today. I just wanted to talk about-
But they are also auto aid, automatic aid.
That is correct, sir. You can see on the map, I also identified with these volunteer departments, there are some townships in Sedgwick County proper that the townships have elected not to come under the fire district. Cheney has the volunteer department in Cheney has three townships, Grand River, Morton, and Erie. Mount Hope Fire Department has Greeley Township, Colwich has Union Township, and Clearwater Fire Department has Inneska Township. We do have people that have petitioned in from Union Township and Grand River and Morton. And those responses come out as a premise notice to 911 when those citizens called in, and it automatically dispatches us to that alarm, even though it's in those townships that have not put or are part of the fire district. They can individually petition into the fire district.
So on under the auto, two towns go off, one at the volunteer fire department and us.
Yes. If a stakeholder or citizen in those townships have petitioned into the fire district, we will get an alarm and so will that volunteer department. It doesn't omit them from being responded or dispatched out. That is correct.
Do these people, does none of them pay any kind of fee, or is there-
No, sir.
And that's kind of the, what we're, this is the beginning of the analysis of the fire district and its finances and how we sustain this district. So we're going to look at, we're starting with volunteer departments, and then we're going to move on to the professional departments as well. But part of the challenge here is, and we run into it with Union Township out in Chairman Dennis's district, to where we're going, there's no incentive for folks that live out in these areas that have these auto and mutual aids to get into the district because they're going to get county resources regardless. And so the dilemma we run into from a fiscal model is, we're trying to sustain our fire district, and if there's no incentive for these outlying areas to get into the district, then the payers of the fire district are supplanting, are supplementing the non-payers. And so this is the beginning of that analysis, which is why the chief is here today, just to kind of make you aware of what's going on out there and future potential policy issues that we will have to face if we want to financially continue to sustain our fire district.
So to make this clear, everything that's kind of a light yellow on this map, all of those people are paying 18 mils in order to belong to our fire district. And they get automatic support every time that there's a fire. Our fire department dispatches. The people that are in kind of the green, each one of these townships that is in color in areas that's in color in here, they get the exact same level of service as all those people that are paying 18 mils, except they're paying zero, correct?
They have the potential, if there is an auto aid agreement, their volunteer fire department is going to be automatically supplemented by Sedgwick County at no cost to the residents of that township or that municipality.
So you are correct.
So that means that all of these citizens that are in yellow, it's light yellow, are subsidizing all of the people that are not paying because we're going to dispatch exactly the same, no difference. They're going to get the same level of support whether they're paying or not.
On those auto aid agreements, there are some, each one has a little bit different tweak. It will say what type of equipment they should initially send, but if they ask for additional, our district is going to provide the level of service they need to assist them with that auto aid.
But all those agreements have a line of no reimbursement required.
So I guess that's my biggest concern, is that we've got people that are paying 18 mils and getting service and people are paying zero and getting the same exact service. And we've got a fire department that, as I watched during my campaign and recently, that just a year or so ago, we were talking about it being unsustainable. We were going to go broke in a few years on this, but we're still providing free service to an awful lot of citizens. Now, I'm not, I don't want to put any citizens in Sedgwick County at jeopardy, but I believe that they need to pay their fair share if we're going to provide the service. So what are the options then if we terminate these auto aid agreements?
You reinstitute another agreement with reimbursement required and develop some type of protocol because you're going to need to respond. But we have to develop some type of phased response like most jurisdictions do. If it's within a volunteer fire department's capability to respond to a structure fire, then they respond to a structure fire. If they need us, they call 911, and then we roll. The automatic response should be based off a decision point made by that jurisdiction. When they key the mic and we start rolling, it's with the understanding, supporting a memorandum of agreement that says, we will need to be reimbursed for the level of response that we get. Now, you can scale that, you can develop that scale however you want to do it, based off the municipality, based off their capability, but that could be the tenet of what a future memorandum of understanding would be.
It looks like they have two options. One, they can just join our fire district, and if all of these people join our fire district, we might be able to reduce the mil levy from 18 mils to something less than that because everyone belongs.
Correct.
Or we could have them sign a new mutual aid agreement of some sort with us that we're reimbursed at what it costs us so that we're not doing this for free, basically.
Correct.
Those look like the two options that I can see. And I could see different organizations, different townships or different communities choosing one over the other. If we talked with them, they wouldn't have to be one size fits all with it. Now, my question to the chief, do we have the discipline? I know that when you hear the alarm go off, it's your age to go fight a fire.
Yeah, it's very difficult for a fireman to sit in stationed and hear an alarm. One of the directives that we've given our crews is that even if we don't have an agreement or we bypassed the agreement, if there's a life safety issue, we will roll until that life safety problem is mitigated. And that's important to us to continue that. So sometimes we may send more than what the agreement calls for just because of the chance that there is people trapped or people hurt. So it's very difficult, but it can be done, and we've done a lot better the last year on trying to coordinate this and abide by these agreements in how it's written, literally written.
But by the same token, each one of these areas that are not part of our fire district number one right now have made a decision that they, I believe that they can handle those life safety issues, correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
So I guess I'm kind of confused on why we would dispatch when we already know that they've agreed that they're going to handle the life safety.
Right. And there's various reasons why. Sometimes it will, a citizen will just call straight into the dispatch center and dispatch, maybe they have a new person at the table, or they go ahead and dispatch it, and our crews think that everything has been confirmed up to that point to respond, and it's okay to respond. Or they just get on the air and say, hey, we have people trapped, and our units are going to go on that case. So there are-
I guess I would have a problem with someone calling direct to our dispatch center instead of going through 911 because our emergency action center is the one that takes care of everything.
Right, right.
But then again, Chief, again, if we go back to a scaled model, if an agency has tech rescue capability, some type of capability we know exists, in our memorandum of agreement, we can build that scaled response. And if you know it's tech rescue, then we would know that it was triggered, and we would start heading that way for life safety reasons. Because most volunteer fire departments don't have that kind of tech rescue capability or at least a robust tech rescue capability. They have the ability to do vehicle extraction, but they don't have the ability of collapsed structure or something like that. But you could develop an MOU for that type of scaled response. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And some are stronger than others, some have a bigger, more capability than others. But that, again, is about analysis of those particular jurisdictions.
And I would hope those different fire agencies throughout the county, when we sit down with them and look at the MOU, they'd know what their capabilities are, and we could tailor whatever agreement we have in the future based on whatever they need.
What about medical response? Do we do the same thing for medical response, in those same areas?
No.
Do we automatically send a fire truck to-
Only on life safety. And with our new medical directives, we have priority dispatching, so they're leveled at different, how harsh the call is or how serious it is. On that sheet of paper, it tells you the response type. You can see with these seven volunteers, we have no medical aid agreement with any department.
But do we roll on a chest pain in these areas?
If it's a high priority on the list that it's a life safety, yes, sir.
Then we roll.
Yeah.
That could almost be anything.
Do the people in the fire district, do they get reduced property casualty insurance rates?
It depends on their insurance carrier, on the ISO rating.
So if you're in the district, you might get a cheaper fire rate, insurance rate?
That is possible, yes. Because every insurance company, some insurance companies do not identify ISO, and they will not utilize that as one of their benchmarks.
I guess what I'm getting at, you have to be in the fire district to get that, what benefit is there being in the fire district? I mean, it sounds to me like if I was mayor or township trustee in any, in any of these areas, I'd say, we're not in. Because we'd get the same as everybody else. Why is anybody in the district, I guess is my question.
I would expect that ISO rating would change if we changed the way we respond. Right now, I think that ISO rating, say like a Colwich, is reflective of a dual response of a fire district one response and a Colwich volunteer fire. And of course, I guess the water capability of what they have downtown to support any type of structure fire.
But that still doesn't really answer your question, because that would still be the case, right?
Yeah. I mean, I thought it had to do with proximity to a fire station and proximity to water and whether or not you were in the fire district. So I mean, I guess my question is, presently, these people are joining the fire district just out of habit or whatever, because there's no advantage to being in or out?
The benefit for both organizations, us and each one of these, is ISO recognizes the fire station trucks and water and people. And so if you draw a circle around each one of those towns' volunteer departments, it's a five-mile circle. And five miles out is where some of our constituents or stakeholders in the fire district actually benefit because we have some of these aid agreements, because it goes out into the fire district proper area. So there is benefit. Is there people that are utilizing our resources as part of their ISO? I believe, yes. I think what the manager says is absolutely correct.
I'd like to see numbers, both for fire and medical calls, and not just these. We need to look at city Wichita and all of those. My understanding is, I mean, we're looking at some of these, and I understand the rationale here, but I thought like half of our calls go within the city of Wichita. We need to get, see the whole big picture for all of them, and not, it seems like we're kind of, I don't want to just be picking.
We're in the process of, we're in the process of a more comprehensive study that is taking into account all of those, and all of that data will be included in the final report that we're working on now. It'll take into consideration fire calls, different types of fire calls, different levels of fire calls, medical calls. We're looking at and evaluating the apparent capabilities and capacities of each of these volunteer fire departments based on the type of equipment they have and the number of personnel they have. So we're trying to comprehensively evaluate all of those different variables and provide that information to you in a comprehensive report.
I know we tried, we did something like this a few years ago, and all of these will be updated, so that's good.
The benefit to each of these municipalities and the townships that they serve is their budgetary cost for their fire departments is significantly less than 18 mils. And apparently, they've been comfortable with the type of service they're getting, but they're also being supplemented by Sedgwick County at no cost to the municipality or the citizens.
Well, we, at least one community that's eliminated some of the fire people for budgetary reasons and still rely on us.
I think it's a couple-step process, and eventually, if we're looking at consolidation, we may have to go through and take a look at all the numbers that they're gathering right now for Wichita. But right now, what we've got is an issue where we've got seven different fire departments and large areas of the county that are not paying anything for fire support, and the rest of the county is paying for that. Is that right? If it's not right, we need to submit a letter to each of those different agencies because we have in the agreement that we've got 60 days, we can send them a letter, and in 60 days, we can nullify that agreement and start negotiating a new agreement in that, in the meantime. So I guess that's what the question is. Do we want to let them know that we're interested in negotiating new agreements with them? That we don't want to do anything to jeopardize the safety of the citizens out there, but at the same time, they need to pay for the services that they're receiving?
Well, I guess I'm a little hesitant just to do it to them. I don't, I wouldn't necessarily do it in two steps. I want to see all the numbers because if you're looking at impact on the fire district, the biggest impact is not these small ones. At least I think, based upon the numbers that I've seen in the past, I'd like to see those numbers. Otherwise, it's going to look like we're just picking on these smaller areas, and the biggest bang for your buck is somewhere else. I'd like to see the whole picture. I mean, if we could have some conversation with them and say, hey, this is an issue we're looking at.
But we have to start someplace, and I think that the other issue that you're interested in is more an issue of consolidation rather than support of our fire district right now.
No, no. I'm not talking about consolidation all, I'm saying, if we're going to reevaluate our automatic aids, that's another, we need to look at it for everybody. And if half of our calls, because we're talking about expense, you know, people not paying into it, if half of our calls from the fire district go into the city of Wichita, none of whom are paying into the fire district, that means, I mean, think about, that's half our calls. They're going, and I don't know what the numbers are in these other ones, I mean, we need that information too, unless you have to consult, but we can say, you guys need to pay for this, or we need to not, I don't know what the solution would be, but we need to see the whole picture, I think.
But do you object with us starting with these seven?
Start with them what?
Notifying them that we're, we've got 60 days to renegotiate a new agreement.
60 days before when?
From the time we send them a letter.
Oh, okay, well, we can, but we're not in a deadline to send a letter.
If we want to start making it fair so that the taxpayers that are paying 18 mils aren't carrying a number of people and organizations and areas that are paying zero.
No, I guess I'm not, I wouldn't exclude anyone if we're going to do that. Why don't we want to wait till we get all the data, I guess? I think, to me, there's two separate issues. The first issue is, how do we make those people in the non-urban area of Sedgwick County all on the same playing field as far as fire protection? After this, after this discussion, we're going to have city councils and different people out here, this is going to be public, and they are going to, they're going to say, let's leave. I mean, we've kind of broken the egg open now, and we need to decide what is the right policy for our fire district. The right policy, I think, is that everyone in the confines of fire district one should be paying the same, the same taxes for fire protection because we are going to respond. And so we need to establish that policy and then start moving forward on it, in my opinion. The issue that you're talking about is, is probably more complicated. I know the city of Wichita responds to some emergencies outside the city limits in our area, do they not?
That is correct.
Okay. So there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done, but right now, it seems to me like our policy should be, everybody in fire district one should be paying the same rate for fire protection. Well, I'm just saying it should apply to everybody else and not make any exceptions to it. The city of Wichita shouldn't be accepted. I mean, sometimes the volunteer people, you know, help us out on things too. Well, okay, we've got to establish a policy.
Mr. Chairman, isn't it more a management issue on that argument that Commissioner Renzo has? Our fire chief is allowing people to go inside the city of Wichita. You're talking a financial issue, correct?
I'm talking a financial issue. We've got a lot of people out here that are paying zero for the same service that we've got people paying 18 mils for.
Yeah. Well, I would echo the sentiment from Commissioner Andrew, that I think it's good to start with these seven, and then we can come back and look at other things later.
Now, I don't even know if, I mean, I don't, at this point, know how to anticipate what sort of pushback we're going to have. I don't know what sort of legal problems are, have we researched all that? I mean, before we start, we need to know all the answers before we start.
I think that it's, there's a, first of all, there's two kinds of departments out there. There's the seven, these are non-24-hour fully-staffed departments. Wichita, Derby, and Sedgwick County Fire District One are the only 24/7 fully-staffed operations in the entire county. Is that true, Chief?
Yes.
So with these seven entities, the first phase would be giving notice, we're going to dissolve the existing contract, and then sitting down and determining what the new contract would look like, and include legal from county and whatever that township or municipality is, and talk through this with the goal at the end of the day being that they have to pay into the district somehow, whether that's through a fee service when we respond, or whether they just join the district. But to me, that ought to be, that ought to be the basis of discussion and yet provide a good service to where everybody's safe. But it's just like the chairman said at the beginning, you have two choices. Either join the district, or there will be some type of fee payment associated with this so that the rest of our people who are paying into the district, it's more of a fair model than it is today. And Commissioner Andrew, you're right, they've been getting this for free all these years. It's going to be a painful discussion because now we're changing something in midstream that we have provided for 20 years or 30 years or however long we've done this, and we're talking about a change. And so it's going to be a, I mean, these are going to be tough discussions we're going to have to have with the townships and the small municipalities.
Plus, those full-time fire departments, Derby, city of Wichita especially, already have those specialty hazmat, tech rescue, you know, advanced vehicle extrication capability. So really, we'd be going, they would obviously respond, immediate response, and we would be supporting there in the incident command structure. But it's those outliers that, you know, don't have that full capability. But like ICM Plant, you know, for instance, in Colwich has, would need, for certainly, on a scaled response, we would need, if a fire happened there, they would need us immediately as far as that response.
If we open this discussion, do you anticipate other townships electing to go out of the fire district and just take it on a fee-for-service basis?
You could see any of those options.
Well, we've got to anticipate that and see what that means because I don't know how this works. I don't even know who you bill.
And the worst on discussion-
And Grand River, who do you bill? The homeowner?
Or the entity that calls, that you have the aid with. You would bill Clearwater or Colwich or Valley Center.
Okay. Well, I'd pick Grand River because there's no community in the Grand River that, I don't think.
On consideration, if we move forward, that as we move forward through this year, there's going to come a point where those municipalities that own these volunteer departments are going to have a decision point in order to be able to budget for the following fiscal year so that they don't get in a fine if we, you know, some type of, we're, you know, fee-paying type of agreement. And there's always an option that they could say, they could opt out and say they aren't going to call for assistance.
So, is there a mil levy established based off of our capability, or is this established based off of the capability that they, you see what I mean? Do they do that now, or do they do it based off, based off the fact they know they're getting our capability?
I think to answer that question, they're not budgeting, they're budgeting based on our capability. They're paying a certain number, a fraction of mils within the township budget to feed into these fire, these volunteer fire agencies, and it is not nearly 18 mils. So they are clearly budgeting based off our capability. They know we're going to, we're going to support.
Well, there needs to be equity.
Well, we can't charge people 18 mils and then give their service away free to people that are paying- Well, we can't charge people eighteen mils and then give their service away free to people that are paying zero.
Well, that's my point. We're giving half of their fees to the City of Wichita, and we're not even going to include them in half of our, half our calls. We're giving half of our fees to City of Wichita. You think they're not underfunding their fire department, their responsibility, because they know we can respond to a lot of the things, many of which are, are medical calls? Of course they are. You know, it may have happened slowly, gradually over time, be almost very difficult to weed that out, but we're there.
Well, the citizens in Wichita, I think, I have heard maybe an accurate, have a mill levy equivalency of about twelve mils for fire protection. And I'm not sure that covers everything. I think that covers just the operational cost. It doesn't cost their capital, their, their capital investment, and, and maybe not their, some of their benefits. So, there is, as far as terms of cost to the citizen, it's, it's probably fairly equal Wichita and non-Wichita, because there's, they're paying too.
Well, that may be true, but I got to imagine it would be even higher if they weren't using our service to help subsidize their operations. I agree, we need to have a policy, okay, but it needs to be uniform through everybody. We, I, I mean, the argument that some of these, you know, Wichita, some of the others have all these, you know, different things already in place, to me is an argument as to why they should be included, because we're subsidizing somebody who could arguably take care of themselves and everything anyway, as opposed to the little guys out there, which I understand the argument. We need to talk to them, but.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions as well. This map is not showing all of the city fire stations, is it? It only shows a few.
No, I had all the city fire stations taken off. Actually, those, the green fire stations are for air flight, Wichita Air Authority, and McConnell Air Force Base.
Right, okay. Do we know how these volunteer stations are actually operated? Do they have people on staff at the station waiting for a call? Are they, are they doing other things and, and actually, you know, responding to the station when they get a call? Do we know that?
Yeah, Commissioner, I, they have both. There, there are some organizations that do have a full-time paid, either public safety director or a fire chief designated that works eight to five, and maybe have one person on call during the day. But everybody, there's not a twenty-four-seven staff, no.
While we're gathering data, I think there's several things we ought to add to that, and that, and that is, how do they operate? Do they respond when the call comes in? What's their response time to calls in their, in their jurisdiction, if you will? I think it'd be good to know that, as well as, you guys talked about how many, how many calls we, we go into their jurisdiction to provide aid, and you guys did say it was a benefit that they do respond to sometimes areas into the fire district. I guess it'd be nice to know both sides of that equation, so we need to know when they respond to the fire district, and how many times we respond into the, into the volunteer area.
We are evaluating that.
Okay, we just need to make sure we know both sides of that. It'd be nice to also know, you know, what, like, hours that they operate, you know, if they do have a man stationed, is it twenty-four-seven, or is it, you know, eight hours a day? It'd be nice to know how they manage that. So, other pieces of data would be helpful here. I assume they have the statutory authority to create the volunteer station. We can't force them to change their model.
That is correct.
So, i- i- unless they want to change, we can't force that. Any one of these cities frankly could follow the same model if they wanted to. I mean, for example, you know, you know, any of the, in, any of the areas, if they wanted to peel away from the fire district, theoretically could do that. They could organize and create their own station if they wanted.
To my understanding, sir, yes, that is correct. Hayesville, Mays, Goddard could all form their own volunteer department.
The only teeth we have then, I guess, is, is to, is considering, considering whether we provide a service or not, and whether we, potentially we charge for that service. Those are the only teeth we have. But I'm looking at my district down here. I think Mulvane actually responds a lot into the uncorporated. I know we've had fire, you know, all kinds of calls down there. Derby and Mulvane both respond. Our, our nearest station is cleared up by, you know, basically, by Spirit Air Systems. And so, for them to get a, a unit all the way out to the corner of the county, Mulvane and Derby are there way before we to get there, and they do that a lot. So.
Correct.
I like to, you know, I don't want to, you know, underestimate their response, because I think they provide a lot of response. I think in Derby, in terms of Derby and Mulvane, I think we probably respond less to the area than they, we respond less than they do. They, they, they hit all those calls. So, I, I guess I want to keep things in balance here.
Again, that's part of the larger evaluation that we're doing. All that data is intended to be in that report as to how many times they respond into our jurisdiction, and whether it's necessary, or whether it's habitual. If it's something we have an A-SI agreement on, or simply when the alarm goes out, they're in the habit of responding, whether we actually need their assistance or not. We're trying to sort those, those facts out, so we know how often we actually need them, and how much of this is just historic habit, departments responding with each other, because that's the way they've always done it.
Another observation, I guess the City of Wichita has twenty-two fire stations. We have nine. And we have made a decision decades ago, apparently. We locate our stations based on, you know, on population centers, or close to where the people are, where the calls are, and which is, again, that's a decision we made, and it seems like a smart idea. But it also puts us close to the City of Wichita, and all of our stations are right next to the City of Wichita, just about. Not all of them, but most of them are. And so, for us to respond to the corners of the county is actually, in a sense, our response times aren't great. You know, to the, to area township, for example. We're not going to get there very fast. If we, if we have a call out there, we're just not going to be that responsive, because we placed our stations based on population centers, not on geographic response times. And again, maybe that's a smart thing to do, but I think it's a decision we've made. And now, if you're in a far part of the county, you've got to understand that if, if we, if we provide the service for them, they may not get a fire truck for quite a long time. So, in terms of these ISO ratings, you know, they want, they want fire protection, but I'm not so sure that we can get there fast, faster than their volunteer department can. So, response times is a, is a key part of this deal. You know, how long it takes for us to get there versus their volunteer department? You have to know that data. But anyway, in terms of consolidation, I happen to also notice, for example, Station Thirty-eight. I've been over there to, for township meetings, and I've happened to notice, we have city and county in the same building. And if the call's to the north, one crew goes that way, and if the call's to the south, the other crew goes that way. They, they've divided it up. But it's surrounded by the City of Wichita, and it's right on the, right on the county line. So, that, that station especially, you know, we ought to find a way to, to reduce, I guess, our total, I don't know how often both crews are busy, I guess is my question. That one especially, it just seems like we ought to do some coordination with Wichita or Butler County, because we, it seems like we've got a lot of people, a lot of equipment, and a lot of staff able to respond out of that particular location. We could do some coordination. I think we, we can make some efficiencies. We ought to have those discussions. Even if we don't do a consolidation perhaps, that may be a, you know, the difficult model to get into. But we ought to do some, some efficiency coordination with, you know, some of these areas. I, I happen to notice that, you know, if there is a call, let's say out east of Derby for somewhere, somewhere, we always respond, as county and, as county and city will almost always respond. If there was consolidation, you would never do that. You'd be better coordination. You would simply send a, a vehicle. You wouldn't send them for two different directions, probably. I think that's unlikely that you would do that. The reason we send multiple vehicles is because we're not, we're not coordinated, and we're not, because we're not consolidated. I'm not suggesting that's the right answer, but I think we have more stations, more people, more equipment, which means we have a very expensive system, and we have a little more response on these calls. Again, if you're the guy that needs the help, that's great. But it is an expensive system overall, because we don't have that coordination. We ought to, maybe, maybe these automatic aid things ought to be looked at. You know, maybe we should not have as much automatic response, because it does add cost. One more thing, I guess, and these volunteer departments, most of them get their equipment from Sedgwick County. Is that correct? When we, when we get rid of our equipment, it goes on, we make deals with them, and we give them a deal on the equipment?
There are two volunteer departments that actually pay into the district, Viola and Bentley. They are both members of Fire District One, and they each have volunteer fire departments. We do have reserve equipment stationed in those communities that's utilized by their volunteers. And in Bentley, we have Sedgwick County Fire Reserves that help man that station in Bentley, that utilize those Sedgwick County apparatus.
All right.
But those are the only two, and they're both, all of their residents pay into the fire district.
Thank you.
Well, we still have a fiduciary responsibility to Fire District One. We are the board for Fire District Number One. I think we should at least start discussions with these seven and see what their interest is, and what they would like to do, whether they would be interested in joining the fire district, or if they'd be interested in having some kind of an agreement so that they pay if we respond in their area, based on what it costs us to deploy in there. But we can't just say, well, we've heard this discussion, and we're going to continue allowing the majority of the people to pay, and some other people to get it for free. Do you have, does the commission have any problem with us starting discussions with these folks to see what their interest is?
Mr. Chairman, I guess one thought is, and again, if they respond into our area, and they provide a service, I would expect a reverse relationship. They would bill us as well. Is that true?
I think that's something that would be open for discussion.
Again, I think in Mulvane and Derby, I think they respond more than.
Would we really call for them? I, I think if any agreement, they, we'd have to call rather than them automatically responding. And if we call, and, and we need their help, I would think we'd repay it just like they would.
I see, okay. All right, thanks.
But I don't think that I'd pay if they just showed up.
I think one thing that would, would help if we were allowed to go ahead and start talking to these folks is understanding what capability they would need, what they have, kind of start that discussion now. That would help us in the end draw up an agreement. So, it would benefit us from talking to them now.
I'm concerned about, again, I'll just tell you, most of the rural part of my district, and I don't have as much as any of the other commissioners here, but I think Derby and Mulvane respond, because of where they're located, they respond, they get there faster than we can almost every time. So, if we go back to the same, we're only going to, only, only respond if we call you. We're, we're essentially need to assess the situation personally, then we make the second, you know, make the second call. That's going to, that's going to reduce our response time to most of my district. I mean, every, every, all districts this rural is going to have a reduced response time. I mean, it might, it might save us some money, or might be able to get some money into the fire district if they respond. I, I'm concerned about response times being impacted by that idea.
Is this study that you're working on going to show all that he's talking about, like, if they assist us as well? So, you'll see the pluses and minuses in the net and all that stuff. How, how detailed do you think you can get as far as types of calls?
We're breaking history. By type of call, whether it's.
Structure, fire, vehicle, medical, whatever.
Just go based off of archived, all that evidence.
Okay, do we have any problem with us starting discussions?
I said that I'm going to start the discussion with everybody.
All right.
All right.
Talk about bonds.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Lindsay.
So, a few weeks ago, on the twenty-eighth, we received the bond proceeds for the Ronald Reagan facility. And so, those have currently been assigned to our debt proceeds fund. I will be bringing a resolution to you to establish budget authority to get that cash out of essentially the project and into the general fund. And concurrently with that is an opportunity for you all to essentially earmark how you would like to use those proceeds. And so, we have a couple of different options. The first option, and the easiest option, would be, of course, not to earmark them at all. Simply to put that money in the general fund, boost the overall general fund balance, which would then make it available for you in later years for any type of special project that you wanted to use it for. The second option, of course, would be, since the transfer will occur in 2018, to access some of the funds in the general fund contingencies and use it towards specific projects. One of the things I actually had lobbied you for when we first talked about this was replacing six hundred thousand dollars of what had been bond proceeds for the I-235 interchange in this year, CIP. And so, that would be something I would continue to advocate for, would be to really pay for that entire project cost, eleven point six million over three years with cash. If we did that, that would leave essentially three million dollars of proceeds for you to put towards some other purpose. It could be put toward an administrative building purchase or remodel. It could be put toward CAD or RMS, or we could transfer it out of the general fund and into the equipment reserve, and essentially use it as a placeholder for projects we don't yet know, but certainly that we know will be coming up in future years. And the only reason I bring that up, even though I know we have talked about using debt proceeds on non-technology needs, is because essentially what we're doing is reimbursing the general fund with cash that the general fund had used to fund those projects in the first place, first place. And essentially, it's that cash that's being transferred back to the general fund. So, that's a little different way than how we've looked at it before, but it's certainly an option. The other opportunity we could have is to plan for it in the 2019 budget, since we are starting those deliberations, and you'll have your hearings next month. And from talking with Lori, and there are a number of decision packages that will be coming forward that may have, you may want to use some of that funds towards some of those one-time decision packages. And so, those are some of the options we have. Like I said, when I come and ask for that transfer, that resolution, either later this month or in early May, I guess I, I wanted to know if there was a way you wanted to earmark it in 2018, or if you simply wanted to place it on hold for 2019 budget discussions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have a preference?
Yes.
I'd put it all towards the admin building. I mean, we get six hundred thousand dollars in cash anyway. I mean, we can do that. We're not involved with that. What are you talking about?
Commissioner Andrew?
I think, I think the funds came out of our general fund to allow us to do short-term financing, and I think it should go back in the general fund, and we will judiciously spend that money going forward as we always do, judiciously.
Commissioner O'Donnell, a preference?
I do not, sir.
Commissioner Al?
I, I think the admin building would be my preference.
And I concur, the admin building is my preference.
Okay, that makes that easy. Is the I-235, the use of six hundred thousand for I-235 acceptable in general? May I include that as a part of the resolution for this year? Okay. So, it sounds like, if I may.
You're going to use six hundred thousand for what?
Toward the I-235 project in lieu of bonds in the 2018 CIP.
Out of this money?
Yes.
Why do we need to do that?
Because we had advocated, well, we had included in the budget that was adopted last year, the 2018 through 22 CIP.
Why can't we take the three point six and put it towards admin building, and we'll use six hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's what I'm asking for. We would essentially take it, we would put it back in the general fund, and then we would need to put it over in the CIP fund where those payments are actually made from. It's, it's just accounting fun tricks.
The same. It's still general fund money. So, she's advocating for six hundred thousand to be spent out of the general fund to fund it. It, it's, it's the same use of that money. We, we can, we can dedicate.
Three point six to go to?
We can dedicate three point six to go to the admin building, but also give her the authority for six hundred thousand for the.
Actually, I'm asking for six hundred thousand toward I-235. That would be three point oh million.
So, three million.
To go toward the admin building, which is what I think I'm hearing is the consensus.
Why aren't we doing that? Put three point six into the admin, and then take six hundred thousand dollars to general fund.
Oh, do it in addition to? That would put us potentially in a deficit spending position in the general fund, which when the 2018 budget was adopted, that was a stated goal was not to have that. And so, if that's the case, we can certainly do that, but that would be, I think, a policy decision the commission would want to make.
You know, last year, we had a two actually, I mean, we had like five million dollars left over.
We did, but a good chunk of that was related to M-A-B-C-D, more than half of that, so.
There's a surplus. There's a surplus. There's a difference between operational and using stuff for CIPs.
Yes.
Otherwise, you're going to end up borrowing an extra six hundred thousand dollars for the admin building.
Potentially, yes.
You're going to end up borrowing the money anyway. If you really want to.
Well, to, to that point, for the admin building, we wouldn't necessarily do the bond sale until much later in the process when we had completed the project. And so, we may be looking at a few years. And so we may be looking at a few years out and actually I just read something yesterday about interest rates projected to decrease in 2020, which could be the time we do this.
But nevertheless, you'll still be borrowing.
Yes, that's true. Yes.
How much cash do we have available that we could put towards I-235 and not go into deficit?
We actually will be doing an updated version of the forecast here in the next couple of weeks and so by the time this comes to you, I will have that answer for you.
So we, we could take part of cash as long as we don't go into deficit and then use the rest out of the bond that we've sold and put, and then earmark what's left.
Yes, sir. Although at this point, I would tell you, since it's April and we have a significant amount of the year left to go and projects that are left to be decided, I'm not sure it's, that we'll know for certain what the deficit will be by the year end. I'm not sure I'd want to rely on that in a recommendation to you at this point.
But I, I really don't have a problem with using 600,000 if we have to, up to 600,000 on I-235. We'd bond that anyway, right?
Right. That had been the plan was to bond that this year.
I, I agree with the chairman.
Okay, I see three heads, so that's good for me. I guess, is there, so I'll bring a resolution, 600,000 toward I-235, $3 million potentially toward administrative building if and when that occurs, otherwise simply to be held in the general fund. Is that generally acceptable? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Manager, what else we got?
That's it, Commissioners. As a reminder for everybody, tomorrow we'll be discussing the county admin building and also we'll have the CAFR presentation.
Is, is the discussion tomorrow on admin building, is, is, is the purpose, part of that information, but is part of the purpose of that to eliminate one or two options?
Two decision points. The first one is we've done the due diligence on the River View Building. So there will be a decision on whether we want to go ahead with that or we don't want to go ahead with that. Second is, based off of the last meeting, the chairman had asked us to look at new build and so we have a couple of options to go forward on that. And we just need guidance on where to go with those two options. Do we continue to analyze them or what, what the decision would be?
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have anything? Mr. Unruh, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to ask the sheriff, on the old work release facility, it is now called the Annex.
It will be once construction is finished. Construction, we're getting all the, back in the Annex, it's already the rest of the construction, it will be a jail annex.
But there's no one housed there presently? Okay, well, I keep seeing the daily reports and it says Annex Zero and I thought, they must be down there with a hammer and a nail doing something, so.
Yes, we are. Several of those folks were transferred over to county correction. Most of them. And right now, we should, I feel, update this a little bit more on the process, but we're close to getting ready to be able to go in there and start working on the building, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah? I heard that, I heard the county clerk's getting old.
Is that right?
I have problems driving upstairs.
Huh? Are you getting old?
I, I am, yeah.
How old?
Well, I can give you two more days and then I'll be 40.
Okay, so you're going to be, well, maybe I better not talk about being old. Anyway, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Are you going to sing?
It's Lonny's birthday too.
I'm not going to sing.
I thought the one that brought it up.
No, no, I'm not singing.
You have anything else?
Thank goodness, no.
Oh, good. I'm sorry.
It's Lonny's birthday too.
It's Lonny's birthday too, well, happy birthday.
Oh, yeah.
When I'm 72, it's a little bit- Yeah, that's a birthday. I like Eric.
Any of the staff have anything? Mr. Spears, you got anything this morning?
No, sir.
All right, once again, good work on the e-ways. Mr. Yost, anything this morning? We got a lot of protests coming in?
We're busy.
You're busy.
You said you had like 5,400 protests, something like that?
We have just under 4,000.
4,000.
And last year was?
27.
It's all residential or is it both?
And when's the cutoff date for protests or has it already passed?
It's already passed.
Man, you missed mine. Hey, any of the electeds? Anyone else in the room? Anything else? Very good, we're adjourned. Thank you all.